Okay, we are live, so whenever you're ready, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, how many people do you count, how many people do you see in attendance?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, and then if we can ask it, we see, we see Senator Ellis's picture. Senator Ellis, you behind the picture or are you not on? She is there, thank you. Does that make twenty-two?
Um, yes, we had Senator Hutchings for a minute, but I don't see her.
Senator Hutchings is in the still-in chamber here, so she is there.
There, I think twenty-three was Senator Hutchings and Ellis. Let's keep looking, though.
There's, uh, I think that's, that's Senator Kinsky's calling him by phone, who's traveling home, so he's, he's participating by phone.
Mr. President, Senator Driscoll needs an invite in. He's on the phone as well.
I'm not. There he is, our Senator Gru. That's it. Okay. They're rescinding the link. There's some folks didn't get out of here with the link, so there's.
Mr. President, that's, that's what the Vice President is asking for, is that link. That was, my apologies, I thought he was just wanting in from, from the lobby, but he just needs that link, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the same link we've, we met on this morning, I believe. Isn't that correct, Anthony?
President, I did just forward that to Senator Doc Steter and Driscoll in case they didn't get it, but, but it is the same, same link we've been using all day. I never closed the meeting.
I just let Senator Bebaut in, so Senator Bebaut should be here. There's Majority Floor Leader Doc Steter. There's Vice President Driscoll. There is Senator Anselmi Dalton. So... I think that has us up to about...
I count twenty-seven, Mr. President.
Twenty-seven. I think Senator Bytman's on the road, Senator Hicks is on the road. And... Senator, Senator Roffus is on. So... Senator Wasserburger's on, so.
Senator Bytman's on.
Senator Bytman is on. Did Senator Kinsky make it, or is he still? He's on by, he's on by phone. He's on, if you look down, you see a telephone screen with his, with the phone number there. Senator Kinsky's broadcasting his cellphone to the world. Okay. Madam Clerk, let's just, let's just, I'm not, I'm not figuring out who's not here. We've got in the...
Let's see.
Let's just, let's just run through the roll call really quick, please.
I can do that. I certainly can. Agar?
There's one that's missing.
There we go. Anderson?
Anderson here.
Anselmi Dalton?
Anselmi Dalton here.
Baldwin?
Baldwin here.
Bebaut?
Here.
Bytman?
Here.
Boner? Bouchard? Gotcha.
Here.
Case?
Present.
Coe?
Coe here.
Doc Steter?
Here.
Driscoll?
Driscoll here.
Ellis?
Present.
Gru?
Here.
Hicks?
Senator Hicks, okay, excused.
Hutchings?
Hutchings in attendance.
Thank you. James?
Here.
Kinsky?
Here.
Cost?
Cost here.
Landon?
Here.
Moniz?
Here.
Nethercot?
Here.
Pappas?
Here.
Roffus?
Here.
Schuler?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Steinmetz?
Here.
Von Plater?
Here.
Wasserburger?
Here.
President Perkins?
Here.
I count twenty-eight, Mr. President, with the absence, the excused absence of Senators Agar and Hicks.
Thank you. Thank all of you for your patience in getting on, and I thank you for being participating by, uh, in our joint conference committees from all over the, all over, in fact, all over the western United States, quite frankly. So, welcome back, and thank you for hanging around today. I know many of you could have been other places doing other things, but with that, uh, the Senate is back in order. The, uh... Senator Doc Steter, are you ready on Joint Conference Committee report, uh, Joint Conference Committee Number One, Report Reference, Senate File 1001?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Got to read it.
We need to read in messages from the House.
Thank you. And actually, before we do that, is everybody, has everybody got a, has everybody found their access, electronic access or other access to the Joint Conference Committee reports for Senate File 1001 and House Bill 1004? Anybody not have those?
It looks like everyone gave me, gave a thumbs up.
Thumbs up, or thank you for that. The, uh, okay, let's go ahead and read that in, Chief Clerk.
Messages from the House. Message number three. May sixteenth, twenty twenty, Mr. President, the House of Representatives has completed consideration of the mayor bill, Senate File 1001, dispensing further reading. Message number one oh four, conferees appointed, JCC zero one. On the House, it is Representative Nicholas Chairman, Representative Lindholm and Zwanitzer. Message number four, Mr. President, the House has completed consideration of the mayor bill, Senate File 1002. Conferees appointed on that committee are Representatives Farlow, Chairman Connolly, and Wilson, message number one oh five. Message number five, the House completed consideration of the mayor bill, Senate File 1004. And the conference committees appointed to that conference committee are Representatives Greer Chairman, Representative Burkhart, and Duncan. Message number one ten, Joint Conference Committee Report adopted, Mr. President, House Bill Number 1004 COVID-19 Business Relief Programs has been adopted by the House vote of fifty-nine I, one excused. Sincerely, Wendy Harding, House Chief Clerk.
Thank you. Now let's go back. Senator Doc Steter, are you ready on Joint Conference Committee Number One, Report Reference, Senate File 1001?
Mr. President, I'm ready.
Chief Clerk, would you please read in the Joint Conference Committee Report?
Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, Senate File 1001, referencing House Message Number Ten.
Thank you. Senator Doc Steter?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I move, uh, the Senate do a not to Joint Conference Committee, House Bill 1001, Senate File 1001, and ask for your favorable vote. This is the summary of what we did, folks, and you have the Joint Conference Committee summary report for your review, but we had this areas of mirrored amendments. I'll scroll my notes here. Four mirrored amendments passed out of the House and the Senate on this bill. The conference committee adopted two of the House amendments and two of the Senate amendments, just essentially split them up and approved them, clarifying, first two, clarifying the definition of a state entity that could receive COVID funds. We included renovations for healthcare facilities, providers and healthcare facilities. And first two, the other clarifies that hospitals and other healthcare facilities that are operated by a government entity can be eligible for the assistance. Authorizing grants also for the Wind River Reservation through, through SLIB, Business Councils of the Eastern Shoshone and Northern Arapaho Tribes. And then we, those were the mirrored amendments. Now let's go into what we worked on similarly, with similar situations, similar wording. Conference Committee adopted the House position on acknowledgement of the legislative findings of the state constitution provisions. The House provision was a little more comprehensive because it included Article Seven, Section Twenty of the Constitution, so we include that constitutional note, that connection. We adopted the Senate's position sponsored, actually by Senator Bebaut, Technical Corrections Amendment, since it addressed workers' compensation funding in a more explicit manner. And then the committee adopted the House language on food production processing, which included language about the impacts, market effects, and supply chains. Now, on the other part, where we made some changes, let's go down to, uh, we adopted two of the Senate unrelated or unique amendments sponsored by Senator Kinsky, which dealt with rural healthcare districts and hospital districts that would be eligible for as recipients. We thought that there might be some language previously, but felt pretty strong that we'd keep that in there so that those healthcare districts and hospital districts would be eligible recipients. Didn't want, didn't want to back away from that one, and agreed to that. Sponsored, we took one sponsored by Senator Scott, which removed the legislature from the recipient reporting. Those reports still would be directed to the governor, so they're still out there. And also adopted one House amendment that specifically authorized funding to Wyoming businesses that were directed to ease, or authorized funding to Wyoming businesses that were directed to cease or limit operations by one of the health orders. So that we could make sure that they were covered as well. Committee deleted and further amended a couple of unique amendments, and I was trying to track those down, Senator Bytman, I called you about those, because I think that's where we started. So much has happened in two days, and I'm just trying to track who did what, but the committee, um, we felt like, we talked it over, it's probably the help, it was the COVID itself that caused, uh, the change in the economy, so that was put as a preference of the wording versus health officers, because the COVID started the process. And the forced closure was, was not necessarily true in all cases, and I, and I, in my mind, I went up and down our forty, fifty mile long Main Street and thought of the closures, but none of them were forced. It was just simply COVID-19 that changed their business in the space of about two to three weeks, but eventually it led to those health orders. And that can be a discussion for another time as we, if we want to consider ground rules as, as reclosures and that, but, um, that was an agreement point, and, um, and then, um, working with Senator Boner removed the requirement of Office of Homeland Security to request, um, SLIB approval of capital construction expenditures. In other words, we had Office of Homeland Security in there saying they have to be part of a state emergency, healthcare has to be part of all of that to decide whether or not we want to do assistance out there. And what the good senator was pointing out is we probably already have that statute, and that appears to be the case. So those were the changes, and I turned to my two committee members that I had with me, Senator Gru, Senator Wasserburger, any follow-up with that? I can't find everybody on this screen.
Senator Gru, go to you, Senator Gru, you stuck your hand up first, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chairman did a great job walking all the way through it as I tracked along, but there was the most talk on, um, number sixteen, the delete and further amend, Senator Bytman's amendment. Um, we talked a lot about, you know, the philosophical, you know, what that meant from a philosophical standpoint, and the desire for the body to get that message across. At the end of the day, it was, it was decided to strike that language now, knowing full well that we're going to have a robust discussion in the second thing, second package, about whose roles are whose and what elected officials do and what, and what medical officials do. And I know we're going to have a very robust argument on that, and I think everyone was in agreement, and so that's how that, that got there. The other point I wanted to make was, um, the chairman was very, was wanted to make sure that rural hospitals were, were cited again. There was some pushback from the, from our colleagues on the other side. Uh, we stuck with the Senate position and got that adopted. I think the other changes we made made the bill better, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Senator Wasserburger?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, uh, on and in favor of the Conference Committee Report and agree with what, uh, the Majority Floor Leader and the Senator from Teton County stated. Uh, I, I understand people's concerns about, uh, the word force, and it, it seems to me that, um, healthcare officials had to do those things as a result of, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think down the road, we have the opportunity, uh, actually in a month from now, to, uh, put those kind of comments into, uh, statute if we wish. I just didn't think that a bit, uh, in this particular instance, and I really like the piece, uh, even though I don't represent, represent any, uh, what I would call rural hospitals, but I know that the hospital in Crook County and also in Niobert County are extremely rural, and that that language would hopefully help, uh, remaining in the bill would help, help those rural hospitals. So I, I asked the Senate to vote, uh, to approve this Conference Committee Report and, uh, and allow us to move on and, and start into our other interim work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Senator Wasserburger. We'll now open it up to anybody else in the body for questions, clarifications, or otherwise.
Mr. President, just to follow up, and Senator Gru, um, mentioned that, that it didn't feel like it was necessary to have that healthcare facility language in there again, but felt pretty strong about that. We have situations that need to upgrade or actually have something in terms of healthcare, or in, in the case out on the west side of the state where, and we had, we had an excellent situation going, it was profitable. We had the surgeons, we had the doctors, we had everything, and in the space of, uh, two, uh, space of two to four weeks, we dismantled all of it because of these decisions. And so that's why we kept that language in there. In fact, not only did we dismantle what we had, but we curtailed and delayed and maybe even completely canceled an expansion of the facility thirty miles away to help another rapidly growing community, and so that's, that's why that is very important, that that language has to stay in there. And I want to make sure also, Mr. President, that Senator Bytman has an opportunity to address this, too. I was trying to call him, trying to remember who, where everybody, everybody spoke on this, and I want to make sure he has a voice in this as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. So again, we'll open that up. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the Conference Committee, Joint Conference Committee Report?
Mr. President, Senator Landon is waiting.
Does he have his hand up, or is he waiting in the waiting room?
He has his hand up, sir.
Okay, thank you, Senator Landon.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you. For Chairman Doc Steter, regarding the language that Senator Wasserburger had been, uh, describing, that is inclusive language and additional, and additional to, to any other hospitals who might in order to the benefit of these COVID funds. Is that correct? In other words, it's, it's not that we are supplanting the language, uh, to, to mean only rural hospitals. We just want to make sure that rural hospitals are included among hospitals that, that can benefit from, from any of this funding. And, uh, you can understand why I'm asking that. We have a couple of Level Two trauma centers in our state. Obviously, we don't want them to be closed out, and I don't think the language does that. Is that correct?
Senator Doc Steter, who's going to field that question?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no, specifically, it doesn't close them down, and Senator Kinsky originated this, appreciate his work. Specified rural healthcare districts and hospital districts would be eligible recipients, not excluding, not excluding larger facilities.
So it's additive and not restrictive?
Correct, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Sure, go ahead, Senator Kinsky.
Um, the discussion about, uh, uh, whether we limit it just to those who were closed down by a direct order, or whether they closed as a result of the entire crisis, I got a bit, a little bit lost in the discussion. The, the language that says those who were not necessarily ordered to close but lost all their business due to the crisis, that is still in the bill, correct?
Mr. President?
Yes, Senator Doc Steter?
Okay, I'd have to go back and find that. I can find, tell you though, what we have, we modified those findings. What was removed was the state health officer orders, uh, and forced closure, but what we, um, I'm sorry, skip to something else. But I, I'd have to go back specifically, but I don't believe any of that was removed, Senator Kinsky.
Okay, I just, from the discussion, it was unclear to me. I'm, I'm seeing the language. I'm looking at the report, it looks as though, um, Section Three was added, and in that is language, a... The, bear with me here, I'm sorry. The definition of, the definition of ordered to close includes at the end, required closure, Romanate four. The very last tag is, or as a result of the public health crisis with respect to COVID-19. That was, the intent of that was to say that, um, they closed as a result of the crisis, not necessarily they were ordered to close, and, and that, if I'm reading this report right, that is still in the bill, correct?
If I'm looking at the same thing you are, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone else? Any other questions or comments, members? There appearing to be none. Motion is that the Senate do adopt Joint Conference Committee Number One, Report Reference, Senate File 1001. Will the, will the Chief Clerk call the roll?
Agar, excused. Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Aye. Anselmi Dalton?
Aye, sorry.
Aye, Baldwin? Aye. Bebaut? Aye. Bytman?
Aye.
Aye. Boner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard?
Aye.
Aye. Case?
No.
No. Coe?
Coe, aye.
Aye. Doc Steter?
Aye.
Aye. Driscoll?
Aye.
Aye. Ellis?
Aye.
Aye. Gru?
Aye.
Aye. Hicks?
Hicks, aye.
Hicks, aye. Hutchings? Hutchings?
She's, uh, she's giving me the thumbs up from the chamber.
Aye. James?
Aye.
Aye. Kinsky?
Aye.
Aye. Cost?
Aye.
Aye. Landon?
Aye.
Aye. Moniz?
Aye.
Aye. Nethercot?
Aye.
Aye. Pappas?
Aye.
Aye. Roffus?
Aye.
Aye. Schuler?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
No.
No. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Aye. Von Plater?
Aye.
Aye. Wasserburger?
Aye.
Aye. President Perkins?
Aye. I think Senator Hutchings has her video, her audio fixed.
Hutchings, aye.
Hutchings, aye. Thank you.
It's okay.
Closing vote? Closing vote closed. Twenty-seven, aye, two, no, one excused.
By your votes, you have adopted the Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, Reference Senate File 1001. Senator Anderson, are you ready on Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, Reference House Bill 1004?
Mr. President, I'm ready.
Could you please read that in?
Joint Conference Committee Report Number One for House Bill 1004, COVID-19 Business Relief, Relief Programs.
Thank you. Senator Anderson?
I'm sorry, I forgot on the previous one to read this, the signees for the House. It was Chairman Greer and Representatives Burkhart and Duncan. For the Senate, it was Chairman Anderson, Senators Bebaut and Roffus.
Thank you. Now, Senator Anderson?
Mr. President, I move adoption of the Joint Conference Committee Report Number One to House Bill 1004, and ask you to vote aye. And to explain the report that the great committee did, great committee work that was done, is Senator Roffus.
Thank you, Senator Roffus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it was a good conference committee, and really, we pretty much adopted a compromised version of everything. I'll walk everyone through how that proceeded. Uh, you should have, hopefully, your Conference Committee Report in front of you, and I'll run through briefly, uh, the key concepts that you see in there, and if anybody has any questions about the, the amendments or, or how they, uh, took place, I'm happy to go over those. But what you basically see is that we adopted, uh, a House amendment related to the, uh, this was a mirror amendment, regarding the stipend from fifteen to twenty thousand, so that's what we have at the top with the adopting the House amendment, uh, and deleting a Senate amendment, but as we get into the delete, the following Senate amendments and further amend, it's basically all compromise for each of these, so I'll walk through that. As we go in, you see page six, line fourteen, some additional language that's inserted. Uh, this is language from the Kinsky amendment that was compromised upon for the first of the grant programs to provide that orders associated with the COVID-19 pandemic would be included in the language for that first program. Most, I think actually all of the rest of the amendments go into Section Three, which is the Grant to Loan Program. I'll ask the chamber to recall that the way we left the Grant to Loan Program was largely, uh, a mirrored amendment between the House and the Senate, which was based on some work done by the Minerals Committee, but then we ended up amending it a little bit more in the Senate. And then we also had the Steinmetz Amendment, which was an entirely new Section Seven. new Section 7. As an overview, what we ended up doing was instead of creating an entirely new Section 7, you'll see that what we did was we took the spirit of that fifty million dollars for closed businesses, targeting closed businesses, and we incorporated that into the Section 3 Grant Program facilitated by the Business Council instead. So rather than creating a new program, the money was captured from the Senate side, put into Section 3, and still was directed towards the spirit of the Steinmetz Amendment that was adopted by the Senate. As you see in Section 3, that's why we have this new language, business required to close, is a new definition that's provided. This is consistent with the Steinmetz Amendment and is inserted in Section 3 now. Scrolling down, you'll see in the D paragraph of eligible businesses, this gets at a compromise between the Beitman Amendment, in which we eliminated the 100 full-time employees or less, and the House position where they strongly wanted the 100 full-time employees. So we kept the 100 full-time employees, but we allowed flexibility, and you see new language there in the D paragraph under Romanate 3. The employee requirement of this sub-paragraph shall not apply to stipends awarded under this section upon good cause shown by the eligible business to the council as provided by rule of the council. So the idea is if there is a justification for an exception to the hundred-person rule, and you can make that case to the Business Council, you would have the flexibility to do so. And the specific case that we typically use was, well, what if you had 101 employees? Are you completely ineligible for this program? This provides flexibility for the Business Council to be thoughtful and reflect some of the interests that we had on the Senate side. There's another change as you get down to Romanate 4, the next paragraph there, with regard to required closure. This is the final piece of the Kinsky Amendment being added, which is the language from the Kinsky Amendment. You can see there at the end, as a result of any closures or public health orders, or as a result of the public health crisis with respect to COVID-19, has been added. So the Kinsky Amendment is basically adopted with the exception of a couple of words up on Page 6. Scrolling down through this next page is all mirrored language on Page 3. Onto Page 4, more mirrored language, but we have a new Paragraph C I'd call the body's attention to. That paragraph begins any eligible business that is a business required to close as defined by a one of this section. So this is the closure provision that was taken from the Steinmetz Amendment, Section 7, and moved to this Section 3 Grant Program administered by the Business Council. And the language was crafted in such a way that it reflected all of the priorities from the Steinmetz Amendment, but now being implemented through this portion of the program. So you can see, again, it's for supplemental closure stipend, and it's to be awarded based on the following factors for each applicant, the loss of income, the change in the amount of expenses, whether the business received any state or federal funds, and any other factor established by rule of the council. So that's language from the Steinmetz Amendment. Going on to Page 5, you see a continuation of mirrored language until you get to Paragraph H. Paragraph H is simply the appropriation language. The last time you saw it was 175 million, but we took the fifty million dollars from the Steinmetz Amendment, put it into this, so it's 225. And then you'll see about a third of the way through that, or two-thirds of the way through that paragraph, there's some additional language of this federal funds appropriation. Fifty million dollars shall be expended only on the supplemental closure stipends as provided by subsection C of this section. So the Steinmetz Amendment, Section 7, was integrated into the compromise language for Section 3. Both chambers were happy with that. And effectively, every amendment that was brought forward was compromised together primarily into that Section 3 with a couple of words changed in Section 2. If anyone has any questions about specific amendments, I'm happy to answer those, but that's the conference committee report ends up just being a full compromise between the two chamber positions. And honestly, everyone was supportive of all the ideas that were presented. We were just trying to find a way to get to a middle ground that properly reflected the interests and concerns of each chamber. And in particular, with regard to the 100 employees, that was just a down-the-middle compromise, recognizing that the House position was precisely different from the Senate position. With that, Mr. President, I'd be happy to take any questions or defer to my other members of my committee for any points that I may have missed, good Chairman or Senator Bebaut.
Thank you, Senator Rothfuss. Great job. We'll go to Senator Anderson and then Senator Bebaut for additional comments. Senator Anderson first.
Mr. President, I was just going to add to the presentation. The Steinmetz, Section 7, sent that money to the SLIB board and had a whole new organization set up. We put that back to the Wyoming Business Council because they already have the system set up and are ready to work that. And we thought we would overload the SLIB board with more things here. So just so we know, that went to the Wyoming Business Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Bebaut?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I would add is that the House Conferences, as well as the Senate, both understood the urgency of trying to get the money out, given what we're going through and how we do that. We have the three programs to do that, yet we understand that we got to be responsible and have, for lack of good sideboards that protect the state and our investment in it, yet, and more importantly, Mr. President, a federal audit. So I think we accomplished that by the way we did it. And to bring in the Section 7 from Senator Steinmetz, I think the way we did it was pretty creative. We accomplished everything, exact same language, and just put it there so it was not duplicative. So I thought the way it ended up really, was it really a good compromise? I think the Senate came out with what they would want to have had and where we wanted going in there. So I would ask for your support and vote.
Thanks, Senator Bebaut. We'll open it up to any other members of the body to ask questions or clarification. Senator Steinmetz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to compliment the Conference Committee on their good work. I really appreciate how you feathered my amendment into the bill and made it work for our small businesses that have been closed. I compliment you on your work, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Steinmetz. Any other comments or questions for the discussion? Seeing none, are ready for the question. Question is, the motion is the Senate do adopt Joint Conference Committee Report Number 1, reference House Bill 1004. And again, just before we go to that, I do want to thank both the Joint Conference Committees, in fact, all three of the Conference Committees, for all your hard work. Appreciate that, recognizing that the majority of all Conferences were attending by Zoom. In fact, all the Conferences, regardless where you were, were attending by Zoom, but the vast majority of you were not in the Capitol. And so I just, it's just amazing to me how this comes together. So again, thank you for good work. With that, the motion is that Senate do adopt Joint Conference Committee Report Number 1, reference House Bill 1004. You've been asked to vote aye. Chief Clerk, will please call the roll?
Agar, excused. Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Aye. And Sammy Dalton?
Aye.
Aye. Baldwin?
Baldwin, aye.
Aye. Bebaut?
Aye.
Aye. Beitman?
Aye.
Aye. Boner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard?
Bouchard, aye.
Aye. Case?
Conflict.
Conflict. Coe?
Coe, aye.
Aye. Doc Stater?
Aye.
Aye. Driscoll?
Conflict.
Conflict. Ellis?
Ellis, aye.
Aye. Guru?
Guru, aye.
Aye. Hicks?
Senator Hicks was here.
Hicks?
Might have been dropped, going to bags.
I can hear him driving down the road.
Hutchings?
No, that's...
Oops, Hutchings, aye.
Aye. Hicks?
Excuse.
Let's try it one more. We'll continue and give him one more shot. James?
James, aye.
Aye. Kinsky?
Aye.
Aye. Cost?
Aye.
Aye. Landon? Landon?
I think you're on mute, Landon.
Aye.
Aye. Moniz? Aye. Nethercot?
Aye.
Aye. Pappas?
Aye.
Aye. Rothfuss?
Aye.
Aye. Schuler?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Aye. Von Plater?
Aye.
Aye. Wasserberger?
Aye.
Aye. President Perkins?
Perkins, aye.
Aye. Hicks?
Excused.
Excused. Closing vote?
Baldwin, aye to conflict.
Baldwin, aye to conflict. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. Twenty-five aye, two excused, three conflict.
By your vote, you have adopted the Joint Conference Committee Report Number 1, reference House Bill 1004. That's all the work...
Mr. President?
Yes, Senator Kinsky?
I have a text from Senator Hicks that his computer keeps dropping connection, so he's trying to call in. So Anthony should be on the watch for that.
Okay, thank you, Senator Kinsky. So with that, if we could, Senator, Mr. Vice President, if you're on there, you can give us a brief update on the status of the Joint Conference Committee Report Number 1? We didn't hear it. Senator Nethercot, are you on the phone?
I am, Mr. President.
Don't know where the Vice President went. Can you give everybody a short update to the extent you can on where you're at with the last conference committee?
I can, Mr. President. So I believe that we have had a successful conference committee. Good senators, we had two, we had to meet twice in order to discuss the primary issues. Obviously, the sticking point had to do with the liability concern. And so that, I think, could have made her, that could have killed the entire bill. That was very clear to us on both sides. And so through a lot of effort and compromise, a middle ground was reached. Interestingly enough, the good Senator Anselmi Dalton sent an email outlining some of our work here. What was brought up by the House was that Wyoming Statute 354114 does provide immunity associated with pandemic or contagious diseases. And so, and they believed that that applied to businesses as well. So recognizing that that was their position, felt that it would be prudent then just to take what they believed to be true and add some clarifying language to make sure business entity was expressly added to that. The essential understanding of how that immunity will work is if you are a business owner who is in good faith, honoring and following best practices as advised by those health orders that get issued, you are given full immunity. This is not a perfect solution, but I think it is a great solution. In order to get Senate File and House Bill 1002 passed, there's a lot of incredible work in there from Management Council that provides significant solutions to the businesses and people of Wyoming. So I would urge your favorable consideration of the work that was done to reach that compromise concerning the immunity issue. So I want to stress to the body and to all of your constituents who are concerned about the floodgate of litigation opening up as of today, between now and the six weeks that the Judiciary Committee can bring forth a formal proposal back in our special session, that there is immunity available so long as they are operating as a reasonable person would, following those guidance. And so for that, I think that businesses are protected, and I think it's a healthy compromise. There were additional amendments that were gained and lost as part of the process. It looks like the good Vice President is here, and I can let him run through some of those when that report is ready.
Mr. President?
Senator Bebaut?
Mr. President, would it be all right to ask the Chairman of Judiciary a question?
Sure, it would be. Before you do that, let me just, Director of LSO just came in and informed me that the Joint Conference Committee Report for this last bill has just gone out and been emailed out for electronic signature to all the six participants. So it's probably about, we're probably about a half hour away or so from having that available for us for consideration. So that's all that... So I would get that off my mind while I was still fresh, because I didn't know how long I was going to remember it, Senator Bebaut. So Senator Bebaut, back to you.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. President. And I watched a little bit of the work by the Senate on that Joint Conference Committee, and they did do a good job. And I understand the compromise. A question I have for Senator Nethercot, and having been involved, unfortunately, in these kind of lawsuits over my career, and you know, the good faith provision is something that is just remiss with attorneys driving holes through it, and you understand where I'm coming from. As we work this in the Judiciary Committee, is there something better we can get out of this in good faith as we move forward? Because all that, I mean, I understand what it means, but actually, when you get into litigation, that becomes a sticking point, and it's utilized by the opposition to really, to try to go after the business owners. And is there something better we can do? And if you worked this bill, will you be looking at that?
Mr. President?
Senator Nethercot?
Thank you. A great question from the good Senator from Fremont County. The standard of good faith is certainly an uncomfortable standard for everyone involved. I understand that businesses want a black and white understanding of what their exposure to risk and liability is. I get that. Unfortunately, it's not realistic. And looking at the original draft, it's found in Senate File 1005 with the intentional conduct standard. If you recall, the question that I had asked was whether or not a failure to provide PPE would be considered an intentional act. And while I was doing that, I found case law that would support that an omission like that could be considered an intentional act for tort liability. So then, when we look at the amendment that the good Senator from Sweetwater County presented, you know, then we're just going back to the standard tort definitions associated with gross negligence and wanton and willful conduct. And these are cases of facts. And unfortunately, there's no way really to legislate around real-life situations and encompass all of those particular pieces, other than just to not allow access to those courts. And so I think that this is a really easy standard for businesses to meet for good faith, right? So if they have, if they're acting reasonably, like a reasonable person or a reasonable business should, they have full immunity. So in our traditional understanding of tort liability, we have what's known as comparative fault, where a jury has the opportunity to weigh percentages of fault between all of the actors, from the plaintiff to the defendant to other parties that might be involved. That's completely avoided through this proposed legislation. It is 100% full immunity, and so there is no comparison of fault. I believe it's a good solution, and particularly for now, I do think it'll be a conversation. I look forward to hearing from the stakeholders as the Judiciary Committee vets that particular standard, which currently is in law. It's not something new that we've entered in. So that's currently in the statute, that good faith provision. But it will be helpful to hear from business what solutions they might have, and from attorneys across the state and the judges, about their feelings and what really is the right result.
Thank you, Senator Nethercot. Senator Scott, just your hand.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. Let me give you a little perspective on that from the point of view of somebody who's not a lawyer, and your lawyers may well pick me apart on it. But it seems to me that what business would really like to have, and what would really solve the problem, is a clear enough immunity so that if you do get sued, the court has a very good ability to...
the court has a very good ability to dismiss the suit. I don't think we're quite there yet. You've still got the potential of a jury question over the good faith issue. You've got the potential of, of a jury question because there's still a negligence, it's a gross negligence, but there's still a negligence standard in there that's an exception. So I think this room, and as long as you have those, and you, if you can't get the case dismissed on a, on a motion for summary judgment or something like that, you have the potential of suits where they hope to settle for something less than the cost of defending the lawsuit. But having said that, I think this is a great improvement. I think it's as, as they went as far as we could reasonably expect to go with the difference between the two houses. So I would really compliment the Conference Committee, but I do think it's sort of in the half a loaf situation, which is a lot better than nothing, but the problem is not yet entirely solved, and we'll have to work on it further.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Scott. Senator Landon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've received quite a bit of feedback with regard to the Von Plater amendment. As to the timing of entry, I believe that language was brought in in an amendment, and I believe it was in 1002. Maybe the, the good Chairman of Judiciary can correct me if I'm wrong. But I have gotten quite a bit of feedback as to, as to the requirement that, that somebody be tested positive. Was there any conversation about that, or do I have the wrong bill?
Senator? Senator, I don't, so anyway, Senator, is Vice President Driscoll on?
I am.
Thank you.
Apparently I need to change my background.
Oh, no. You're not, you, you, you didn't write into the sunset, but you apparently blended into the sunset. But anyway, thank you. Mr. Vice President, Mr. Vice President, did you hear the question?
I was answering Senator Landon's, because it was in the bill, and we just left it. They did not raise the point or push it, and we left it.
Well, you know, and I will, I can tell you that the conversation was last night. We, we had significant conversation about this in our body. And this, the, the majority of this body voted to require a positive test for COVID. We had that discussion last night, and, and one of the amendments specifically had that. We had that discussion last night, and this body voted to require a positive test.
Mr. President, I remember it well, and I think it happened sometime before one o'clock this morning that we had that conversation, and had a, had a good, as you said, just a good debate and, and passed that amendment. I was just curious if it held through the Conference Committee, and I appreciate the answer from the Vice President. Thank you.
Senator Nethercot?
Mr. President?
Just go to Senator, let's go to Senator Nethercot. She, she was gonna finish up this point for us, I think.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for information for the body, we did receive the Joint Conference Report. Vice President Driscoll, Senator Anselmi Dalton, if you could go reply back and sign that. It looks like much of the House has, and I have as well, so we should be getting that back shortly. And then we also got the summary to maybe answer some of those more specific questions. There were a lot of amendments to 1002.
Thank you for that. Senator Kinsky?
I, I heard Vice President Driscoll reply. I didn't understand the answer. Did the requirement for a COVID positive test stay in the bill?
Senator Driscoll?
Yes, it did. We, basically, the, the compromises were across, you'll find shortly, I, I've got to sign this report, but there's very few changes were made from Senate positions. There'll be just a couple.
Thank you.
We had the knockdown, drag down on the immunity. Basically, all the rest of it, nobody paid a lot of attention.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, we're probably about thirty minutes or so from having those conference reports back for us to actually act on. Did you say something, Senator Case? Senator Case?
Well, Mr. President, if they sign the electronic copies while we're talking to them right now, wouldn't we have them back right away? How long would it take, Anthony?
Senator Case, I would defer to Chief Clerk Thompson on that.
Madam Chief Clerk, did you hear the question?
I did. We do have Mr. Shaw on with us, I believe. It, it shouldn't be long, but I, I, I know there, there he is.
Mr. President?
Sure. Yeah, just for people who are, anybody who's watching this, Ian Shaw is the, the head of Legal Division of the LSO, so Ian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President. Yes, we need to post it to the web so that it's appropriately distributed to the members. That's probably the thing that will take more time. I see that, I think we have a majority of the signatures already, so I think we're in good shape to get that out. My guess is it will probably take between five and ten minutes to get it out on the web.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. President? You're muted. And thought it would be about ten to fifteen more minutes before that's, we've got to have it distributed, approved electronically and available before we take it up. So who is, who is next? Senator Von Plater?
I'm just wondering if it's a House bill or it is a Senate file.
At this point, I don't, do you remember which, do you remember where we ended up, Senator Driscoll?
House bill, I believe. Pretty sure of that. No, they go to Senate, finally.
Senate file.
Senate file.
Mr. President?
There you have it, from the Chief Clerk's mouth. If she says it, you can take to the bank.
Senator Coe.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to thank Senator Anselmi Dalton. I just got the email she sent out, so thank you for doing that. And you know, gives a great summary of, of how this all turned out, and so, you know, thank you for sending out the summary.
So if, is there anything else? Otherwise, we'll just stand at ease for the sound of the gavel. It's, we're looking probably ten to fifteen minutes.
Mr. President?
Senator Doc Stater?
Just quickly, compliment everybody involved on this one. No doubt, this was a very hot topic. You could see that unfold over the last couple of days. A lot of passion into it, but it also needed some detailed work. Compliment the Chairman of Judiciary, all those who worked on it. It all came together today. And actually, this morning, I think their Conference Committee was, had some excellent television ratings, and just interesting day. But I want to compliment everybody who worked so hard on this. A lot of people came together to make this one work.
It went from, it went from dark clouds to sunshine pretty fast. Senator Kinsky?
Yes, just a request, just in case I and Senator Hicks and others get dropped, and could you still have Ellen send out the text that's, that's a couple minutes before we're gonna gavel in?
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
You want to finish with the explanation of what we did? It'll save us time when we go back in. Everybody already know.
Let's, let's, you know, let's, let's just take it in order. Ultimately, we're supposed to, we would have that, it would be moved and read in, and then we would have our discussion. And I think if we still get that process, you know, for the few minutes it'll save, you know, I think that's, that would certainly be more convenient for us, but I think it'll make more sense to anybody who's viewing and trying to follow this, if we follow the, follow the order. All right, anything else? Again, thank you all of you for your time and effort on this, and thank you, Anthony, and Jamie, and those who pulled us together. I had sleepless nights over how this would come together and how we would do this remotely. And it's been remarkably, under the circumstances remarkably well. So compliment all of you, compliment staff, and we'll, Senate will stand and recess the sound of gavel, like I say, anticipating about ten minutes. So, you know, to five, five, ten minutes after ten, excuse me, quarter after five, or ten minutes after five, somewhere in there. Thank you.
So Senator Nethercutt and Senator Anselmi Dalton, what would this committee report if we had three women on this committee? Would we have just come back with the Senate file unchanged? Good job. No offense, Vice President. Turn your mute. Senator Anselmi Dalton. No? No?
Ellen, are you up there? Ellen? Anthony, you're on there? Anthony?
I'm here, Mr. President. Are you ready?
Anthony?
I'm here, Mr. President.
Oh, of course.
He might not have his headphones.
Sitting there calling Anthony, he didn't put on my headphones. Anthony, did we send out a text letting folks know that we're ready to go?
Yep, we will do that right now.
All right, thank you. You know. I'm the first. Okay, I did it again. Wonder why I can't hear when I have my headphones on? Senator Anselmi Dalton, are you on? Yes, you are. Hey, thank you for the email. I thought that was very good. Thank you. So Senator Nethercot and Senator Anselmi Dalton. What would this committee report if we had three women on this committee? Would we have just come back with the Senate file unchanged? Good job. No offense, Vice President. Senator Anselmi Dalton. Turn on your mute. Senator Anselmi Dalton. No? Madam Chief Clerk, I'm looking at, I don't see Senator Agar. And I don't see Senator Kinski.
Let me see if they might just have their.
I see Senator Hicks is here.
Senator Perkins, I don't think Senator Kinski has called back in.
Okay.
There he is. I saw him for a second.
He was on and he disappeared? Okay, we'll give you one more minute.
He is, looks like he was driving. There he is. I think he can, oh.
Anthony has to unmute me.
You're there.
There we go, unmute. There you go, thank you. It wasn't me, the host has been muting me. So you can get muted automatically when you come in, so.
We didn't have to pay an extra to do that. Thank you. I think we're ready. We'll call the Senate, we'll come back to order. I believe, do we have additional messages from the House, Madam Chief Clerk? Senator Anselmi Dalton. Oh.
No, no, Mr. President, we do not.
We do not yet, okay. Do we need, do we need a, do we need a message from the House in order to take up this bill, this committee report?
No, sir, it's a Senate file.
Oh, thank you.
So it's our report.
Thank you, okay. So if we can go ahead and have.
Now Senator Anselmi Dalton is asking for recognition.
That's right, one second Senator Anselmi Dalton. So let's go ahead, we've allowed you to mute and unmute your mic, so if you go ahead and everybody mute yourselves, except who's going to talk. So with that, Senator Anselmi Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to say that though Senator Nethercot and I did rocket. Senator really was the hard driver in the bargain too. He did a great job. I just wanted to give that point of order. And then I was just gonna ask for privileges for one quick second.
Sure, privilege is yours.
Thank you. I want to congratulate my son Stephen on graduating from University of Wyoming this day and going on to University of Wyoming Law School next year.
Thank you. Congratulations to you and your family. That's a great day. I didn't think hard about that law school job. Most lawyers want to be something else. But anyway, no, it's been a great profession for me. Yeah, of course, you have a lot of grace, Senator Anselmi Dalton. Of course, Senator Nethercot, Senator Nethercot is a name partner in her firm. So anyway, congratulations to your family. With that. Senator, or excuse me, Mr. Vice President, are you?
Mr. President?
Yes, Senator Wasserberger.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I have privileges of the floor?
Yes, you may.
At the start of the budget session this year, my son was Doctor of the Day, and he is in his last year of residency at the University of New Mexico Medical School, and he was awarded a fellowship at Mayo Clinic in Rochester, and they choose one orthopedic surgeon for that position. So congratulations to my son, and all of you know him now, and we're looking forward to him returning to Wyoming as he's a Whammy student.
Great, thank you. That's great, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to move to the floor before we get started? We have this minute. Somehow we're picking up the House in the background. There we go, that's better. So with that, Senator, Mr. Vice President, are you ready on Joint Conference Committee Report Reference Senate File 1002?
I am, Mr. President.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and read that in.
Joint Conference Committee Report, Joint Conference Committee Number One Report referencing Senate File 1002, Emergency Powers COVID-19.
Thank you. Senator Doc Steter, excuse me, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have my email found. It was the action summary. I've got my working sheet, so I've got so many emails.
Let's go ahead and move the report if we could, Senator.
I'd like to move Joint Conference Committee Report Number One to Senate File 1002, ask for your favorable consideration.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice President.
Okay. Folks, we went through this, we had a handful of areas that there were differences on, primarily the main one that was the big one that we already went through, and I won't go through it at length, was the civil liability one, which was obviously a key sticking point and was really a major threat to kill the bill, and through lots of hard work, everybody on the committee. That thing ended up getting rolled back in, and you know, the House went from a position of absolutely no way, no chance, no nothing that's gonna die, to we now are gonna have a reasonable, good start into a civil liability for liability, and that I think it's a reasonably workable bill. The next major one would be if you've got your cheat sheet or whatever, would be the workers' compensation definitions, premium and rates. Those were basically mere amendments, so we rolled those together, took the House position, which was basically the same as ours, and adopted the Senate Technical Amendment, which was Senate Amendment Number Two on it. The next one program that came down was the temporary program for tenants and residents. Once again, those were very similar, House and Senate, and we went ahead and adopted the House position, but we deleted the last part of it that deleted the references to the Montana program and amended paragraphs. If you look at the bottom, we eliminated that entire section of that end of it. The next piece is the workers' compensation and unemployment compensation, premium contributions. The House adopted that portion of our amendments, both amendments as is, and the last action that we took was the new Section Seven, which would have been ten, that gave the governor the blank check to be able to create the new programs, and we went ahead and rolled on that one and eliminated that part of it. With that, I'd stand for questions and ask for your favorable vote.
Thank you. Let's go to our other, our other members of that conference committee. I'll start with you, Senator Nethercot.
Happy to stand for any questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Anselmi Dalton, anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say that while it's not perfect, I think we did a good job. Senator Nethercot and Chairman Driscoll coming up with a compromise where we avoid the exposure under thirty-five dash four dash one ten, which has liability for your diseases, contagious diseases, by putting in thirty-five dash four one one four, that businesses acting in good faith, although that's a fact question, at least if they're acting in faith and trying that they have immunity. So they can still have lawsuits, but it's really protecting our small businesses and our large businesses too, and everyone who's trying to do what they should do, and it also ensures that the public is protected, and the fact that, you know, people have to actually take good faith measures. So I'm very pleased with what we came up with. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just note for anybody who's looking at the Joint Conference Committee Report, you can see the new language that they simply went and did a few changes to thirty-five four four one fourteen A, which is the entire section or subsection is now listed on the conference committee report with the, with the changes identified. So let's go, open that up. Any other questions or comments from members of the body?
Mr. President.
Senator Kinski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hats off to the Conference Committee, in particular, I listened in, I heard why Senator Driscoll is such a great poker player, and also I do want to, without telling the whole story, I tell you that when Senators Nethercot and Anselmi Dalton came onto judiciary, it really was a game changer. They're both very confident, very passionate, very knowledgeable, very informed, and I think this situation proves that. It was a heavy lift. I apologize to the Judiciary Committee and Judiciary Committee Chair for dumping this thing in so quickly. Originally, I was kind of working offline over a period of a couple weeks before, thinking somebody else was gonna bring this bill, and when it didn't happen, I just went ahead and cut loose with it, and I, I know that upended a lot of processes, and my apologies for that. I didn't mean to offend, I just simply wanted to get it going. In the end, the result was worth it. Thank you, and again, congratulations and thanks to the Conference Committee Chair and to the Judiciary Committee Chair for tremendous work on this deal.
Thank you, Senator Kinski. Senator Scott?
Mr. President, Mr. President, on third reading on this bill, I was opposed to the bill due to problems in the workers' comp area. I very much wanted to extend the workers' comp coverage to the COVID-19 cases that are required at work. I was concerned we hadn't quite got it right, and thought that it was possible, because we could, as the bill does in its original form, we can reach back and make people eligible, that we could safely deal with it at the next session. I still have that concern in workers' comp. I think the amendments that were adopted are mediated, but I'm, I'm still concerned, but I'm hopeful we can live with that for a short period, because it is important to get that coverage. Frankly, last night I discounted the possibility that we could get some protection on liability issue, and, Mr. President, frankly, I didn't think there was any chance we would be in the kind of shape we're in now. I really compliment the Conference Committee, both on the House and the Senate side. They did excellent work in coming up with a compromise. Mr. Chairman, the compromise is not perfect, but I learned a long time ago, many years ago, in this place, that if you let the perfect be the enemy of the good, you just don't get things done. So I think they've done excellent work, and I know how important getting some of that liability protection is in terms of getting our economy started, restarted in the situation that we're in now. So with that said, Mr. President, I, in spite of the workers' comp risk, which I think we can deal with, if it's, if, if it's real, I think it probably can be improved some, but in spite of that, I think we ought to adopt the Joint Conference Committee and pass, pass the bill.
Thanks, Senator Scott. Other questions and comments, anyone?
Mr. President?
Senator Bebaut?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a question for possibly you or Senator Anselmi Dalton or Senator Nethercot. I know there is a couple of existing statutes that are pretty, they've been on the books a long time that did us no favors. Can't remember what they are. How does this relate to those, or if it does?
Senator Nethercot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you're referring to that same statutory section where there is civil liability and an assessment of damages. If you, that particular statutory section continues to be said aloud as a fear mongering tactic, and it's cherry picked for how it's read. I encourage you, when you hear somebody repeat that statute, to read it in its entirety. It has to deal with the intentional spreading of smallpox and other contagion through the use of blankets and other materials, as we know that terrible story in our history, that that was something that was done. Assuming that no one is intentionally spreading contagious diseases, you have nothing to worry about. So, you know, I think that that's probably an appropriate prohibition within our laws to discourage the intentional spreading of communicable diseases, and if you do, that there are penalties associated with it. I, of course, would like to make it a felony, but we'll stick with civil damages for now. And so with that, unless there is genuinely intentional conduct, and I don't mean intentional conduct in the part that we have been talking about as it relates to immunity, but you have the mens rea to harm by spreading a communicable disease with the intent to, to kill or cause serious injury. So I don't believe that that's a legitimate concern, and if you are a business that has that concern, act accordingly.
Thank you. Senator Case?
Mr. President, sensing that we're kind of to the end here, I do, I think I'd be remiss to point out that if I didn't point out that this bill and this departure from what the bill originally had came about very fast. It came about with not using our regular rules, was accomplished in the course of three readings within a single day at a conference committee the next day, and it's really an extraordinary policy. It was challenged on the grounds of germaneness to the bill. I, I think it shows, there is a downside to doing things this fast. I'm hopeful that we will think a lot more about this. The result could be perfect, but I would say the process, Mr. President, was imperfect. I commend you, I commend all the senators, all the representatives and the leadership and our staff for handling this emergency the very best they could, but I will continue to bring up issues of process, and, and I think that this bill is an illustration of how very fast some things can go without much regard for the input of the people of our state, and I do appreciate it. I'm not trying to cause a fight here, just want to have my last say. Safe driving home, everybody.
Thanks, Senator Case. Senator, anybody else? Let me switch screens. Anybody else? Thank you very much. The motion is. Tell the Senate to adopt Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, reference Senate File one 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 zero zero two. You've been asked to vote aye. Will the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Agar, excused. Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Aye. Anselmi Dalton?
Anselmi Dalton, aye.
Aye. Baldwin?
Aye.
Aye. Bebaut?
Aye.
Aye. Bytman?
Aye.
Aye. Bonner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard?
Bouchard, aye.
Aye. Case?
No.
No. Coe?
Coe, aye.
Aye. Doc Steter?
Doc Steter, aye.
Aye. Driscoll?
Driscoll, aye.
Aye. Ellis?
Aye.
Aye. Guru?
Guru, aye.
Aye. Hicks?
Hicks, aye.
Aye. Hutchings? Aye. James?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kinsky?
Aye.
Aye. Cost?
Cost, aye.
Aye. Landon?
Aye.
Aye. Moniz?
Aye.
Aye. Nethercot?
Aye.
Aye. Pappas?
Aye.
Aye. Rothfuss?
No.
No. Schuler?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Aye. Von Plater? Aye. Wasserberger?
Aye.
Aye. President Perkins?
Perkins, aye.
Aye. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. Twenty-seven, aye. Two, no. One, excused.
By your vote, you have adopted Joint Conference Committee Number, Joint Conference Committee Report One, reference Senate File one thousand two. I see we have, I see we have, there's some other things, of course, signed into bills. We'll talk in just a minute. But I see we have Governor, Governor is in our waiting room. So we're going to admit him to our Zoom conference so he can address us as we get ready to shut this, shut this two-day session down. Thank you. Senator Gordon, are you there?
I am.
Thank you. Senator Gordon, the floor is yours.
Senator Gordon?
Point of order.
Point of, point of order.
Point of order, Mr. President. It's Governor Gordon.
I need to.
Now it'll be Governor.
Let me start my video. There we are. Okay.
Aye, Senator.
Thank you very much. Well, members of the Senate of the sixty-fifth Legislature of Wyoming, before I begin, I want to give a word of thanks to your fine staff, my fine staff, and the great staff of the great state of Wyoming. These past several weeks have not been easy for any of them, and they have done yeoman's work. Thank you to all the men and women who have made Wyoming the envy of the nation and how we have handled this unprecedented crisis for our state. We have built a plane while we have been flying it. And just like our Wyoming Air Guard yesterday and the United States Air Force today, we have lift under our wings. Yesterday, you began a session intended to help the state address many of the challenges people, businesses, and institutions have been facing to greater and greater degrees over the past six weeks or so. You met, acted efficiently and transparently, and you got the work we needed to get done, done. It is a beautiful day, and in some places, Wyoming has even seen a little bit of rain. Grass is growing, trees are leafing out, and we have good snowpack in most places. Calves and lambs are in the pastures. Spring has come. The good people of Wyoming were tarred to beat the surge that might have come from COVID nineteen. And now we too are emerging. Last night, restaurants were filling again, families were out in the park, and traffic was again on our streets. Campers were headed to the hills and lakes, hair was being cut, and weights were being lifted. And there is no doubt that we have more weight that we must lift. We are some way off from being back to normal still, but we are growing again. Wyoming spirit is just too strong. Your work over these past two days has been extraordinary. You know, it was important to get resources deployed to help our local economies recover recover quickly and to make sure we were ready when demand for our natural resources comes back. You and I share faith in our Wyoming people to lead the way back safely, wisely, and sensibly. Monday morning, Yellowstone Park will open only in Wyoming, because we know we can. You have helped to make sure that those who want to come see all that Wyoming has to offer will feel welcome, and that citizens, businesses, and our workers will feel safe, will know that we have their backs. These are trying times, and we have taken some first steps. We in Wyoming know not to plant our entire garden before the last frost, and we still may have a frost. We have seen an uptick in new cases, and do worry reckless behavior may cripple our progress forward. But we know our journey back to normal will be always simple or easy. But we are Wyoming folk. We are not scared of work. We are not scared of challenge. We know the value of work and of progress, of family, of community, of common sense, and of faith. We are building Wyoming back. And while we know that there is still more work to be done, America's unsinkable economy is coming out of hibernation. As it awakens, the demand for our natural resources regains its stride, we will be ready, we will be safe, and we will be stronger for all of this. Thank you. Godspeed to you on your ways home. Be safe out there. Enjoy this spring that God has given us. God bless Wyoming. Keep her free. God bless the people of Wyoming, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work. All right.
Thank you, Governor. On behalf of the members of the Senate, I want to thank you for your closing remarks today. This is indeed challenging times and unique times. Your leadership, your collaboration, cooperation, teamwork during this crisis is sincerely and greatly respected and appreciated. It indisputably benefits all the residents of our great state of Wyoming. When we work together and work, look forward to continue working to you for the, to deal with the issues that haven't been resolved yet in this crisis, as well as all the other issues that we have facing us. COVID is simply COVID nineteen simply being one of them. So thank you, Governor, and appreciate you. And God speed to you and your staff. We appreciate your work. I know you've burned a lot of midnight oil. Your staff has burned a little bit, a lot of midnight oil in the last month and a half, two months. And thank you again so much. And please extend our best wishes to your family and to your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. How do I get out?
There you go. It's like Hotel California. So, members, a couple of things, obviously, we have to, I think we've got a report back from the House on what they've done with third-year conference committee reports. So I, we would hope for the best. We need to be a little bit prepared for the worst. I don't have any, I don't have any reason to believe that they won't adopt. You never know. It's not over till it's over. However, what we do have is we've got a couple of things left. We do need to go through the adjournment. We do need to signing the bills. To sign the bills, we have to have a quorum. So we'll take our, we'll actually have and give the opportunity, we don't need everybody to sign the, sign the enrolled acts, assuming that we get to enrolled acts. But we do need, we do need to have a quorum. So with that, I'm going to go to Senators Scott, Case, and Bebaut, and if, ask them if they would like to, if they would like to be in the quorum for the signing of enrolled acts, or if we can let them go pending a text saying that we've got other issues that we've got to deal with that have come up unexpectedly. Senator Scott, do you wish to be part of the quorum? Are you, are you good for the, are you good to go?
Mr. President, I can perfectly well be part of the quorum. And as you say, you never know what might happen next.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Case. I know you've got a long road to go home. Would you like to remain, or would you like to be dismissed and be excused and be able to hit the road?
A very kind offer, Mr. President. Been here so darn long, I think I'll see everything through. I'm going to go home tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Senator Bebaut, how about you?
I'm trying to figure out how to get on here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. President, good job, good comments. I think you got everything well in hand. I want to sign off. And thanks for job well done. We did it. We knew we could. And Wyoming can be proud of everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I know we've got, anybody else that's that's on the road or planning on being on the road? We want to let you off. We want to give you guys first shot at at not being, not not being necessarily available for the quorum. Is there anybody that's traveling that needs to make sure that we just, it'd just be better if we just didn't?
Mr. President?
Senator Kinsky.
You bang that gavel when you sign those acts with such gusto that I hate to miss it. If they could just text us when you're ready to gavel back in, I'll, if, I'll make myself available. I like to make sure that we don't end up short of a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll text you if we need you. Senator Coe, I forgot about you. You're off screen for me. So I'm sorry about that, desk mate. Senator Coe, yes.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, for for forgetting about me. I would like to get off if I can. I've got kind of a family deal tonight I'd like to go to.
Sure, you're excused. You're excused.
Thank you.
Senator Driscoll?
Where Senator gets off, I'd like to give him a huge thank you for chairing the committee of the whole with pretty difficult from a distance. And I truly think we really made history this session. Sitting here listening to Senator Scott on a computer with a smile on his face for two days is probably is as memorable an history as this virtual session itself. So a big thank you. And thank you to everybody here for me is this really has been a tough session that I think we really got good things done. And we also pending what happens, and I shouldn't jinx this, but I think we've mended some bridges working with the House through some of our conference committees. And I think that's a good thing going forward. So thank everybody for all.
Thank you. Senator Hicks?
Mr. President, similar to Senator Kinsky, text me if you need me.
All right, we'll do that. So I think that probably gets us down to where we, where we are. We'll, we'll text you when we need you. If we, anything comes up, we've got the signing of enrolled acts, and then we've got to officially adjourn. So Senator Coe, you're excused. Thanks so much. And rest of you, stay tuned. We'll send you a text out when we've got, you know where we're going from here. So thanks so much. Stand at ease to the sound of the gavel. Stand at ease to the sound of the gavel.
We got quite a few people. I don't, I can't find Ellen now. Anthony, are you, are you on? Oh, never mind. There she is. Okay, there we are. Welcome back, everyone. The the last enrolled act is, is so hot off the, so fresh off the presses, it's still warm, so. Get our Chief Kirk on and she has been, Chief Kirk has been doing the work of three people. I made eighteen. Mr. President, I knew if I got this food ready that you would gavel us back in.
You got some for all of us?
Dinner salad.
Senator, since we're live on television, I suggest you just go ahead and eat that salad.
I guess I'm gonna slide this aside for the great signing.
President, did you listen to the debate in the House?
I did not.
That was, that was good television tonight.
Well, I'm telling you what, that was something else. I was, I was getting a little worried. I was afraid it might go the other way.
It was, it was going south for a while. Burla brought it back.
Which, which bill was that, Senator Doc Statter?
The one we've been waiting on, all about exemption. The one that Senator Nethercott helped us so much with behind the scenes today. Thank you, Senator.
It is now being debated on, on YouTube, so you can go there and I thought that was live. It turns out it's not. So I was wondering if you guys would ever come back in.
Oh, you were, you were watching it after the fact thinking it was live, Senator Von Flader?
Exactly.
Nice.
And it was Memorex.
Yeah, there you go. If you, well, he's old enough to know Memorex, that's for sure.
The internet never forgets.
Now, that was back in the eight-track days, wasn't it? All right.
My staff don't know what a Rolodex is. I tell them, go look in my Rolodex for my tax ID number and then, what are you talking about? Just saying. Little thing.
Here we go. Thank you. Nice that we, I'm glad none of you used any bad words because that's preserved for history there. But anyway, thank you for hanging around and, and thank you for your patience. I believe we have messages from the House, Madam Chief Clerk.
Message number 112, Joint Conference Committee Report adopted. Mr. President, Senate File Number 1002, Emergency Powers COVID-19, two has been adopted with a vote of thirty-eight ayes, twenty noes, two excused. Wendy Harding, House Chief Clerk.
Thank you. We are at that order of business of signing enrolled acts. Well, Chief Clerk, you wanna, we are, we have House, first we have Senate File 1001. Chief Clerk, will you read that in?
Enrolled, enrolled act number one, being original Senate File 1001, an act relating to the emergency expenses of government.
About to sign enrolled, Senate enrolled act number one being originally Senate File 1001. I have so signed. We'll switch it up. I'm gonna switch it up because I have someone here. Yes, no, this is right. Senate Enrolled Act Two, first reading, reading of the enrolled acts. Madam Clerk.
Senate Enrolled Act Two being original Senate File 1002, an act relating to emergency aid and emergency procedures in response to the COVID-19 novel coronavirus pandemic.
I'm about to sign Senate Enrolled Act Two being originally Senate File 1002. I have so signed. They're on their way to the House for signature. Senate Enrolled Act Number One, reading, first, reading of, excuse me, reading of the enrolled act. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I believe that's House Enrolled Act.
Excuse me, thank you. House Enrolled Act Number One, reading of the enrolled act.
House Enrolled Act Number One being original House Bill 1004, an act relating to the emergency expenses of government related to business relief.
I'm about to sign House Enrolled Act Number One being originally House Bill 1004. I have so signed. Mr. Majority Leader, that clears the desk.
Mr. President, I move that the bills currently pending before this body in the 65th Wyoming State Legislature made 2020 special session not be carried over to any future legislation. Need to.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a minute, we need to have mics mute.
Okay, I think we got that. Go ahead. Thank you. I think Senator Roth is trying to pick up with your, did you second that motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I thought I did, but I'll do it again. Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
For the motion, all those in favor say aye. Point of order, yes, point of order. Senator Von Flader?
Mr. President, might we allow the Majority Leader to restate the motion? I think it was cut off right there at the end. Maybe we could try that one more time. Thank you.
All right, you launch this again, no problem. Thank you. Here we go. Mr. President, I move that the bills currently pending before this body in the 65th Wyoming State Legislature made 2020 special session not be carried over to any future legislation, any future legislative session.
Mr. President, I second that motion.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. You know how to do this.
It's unanimous.
It appears unanimous. Are there any opposed? Raise your hand. There being none, the motion is carried. Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that the House of Representatives be informed that the Senate of the Mr. President, I move that the House of Representatives be informed that the Senate of the 65th Wyoming State Legislature made 2020 special session has completed its business and is ready to adjourn until a date certain as called jointly by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House.
Heard the motion? Please raise your hands in favor, of those in favor.
It's unanimous?
It's unanimous. Are there any opposed? Please raise your hand. There appearing to be none, motion has passed. I'm directing the Senate Chief Clerk, Ellen Thompson, to inform the House of Representatives that the Senate made 2020 special session of the 65th Wyoming Legislature is ready to adjourn. Mr. Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. President, I move the following. One, that the Senate 65th Wyoming State Legislature be adjourned from the May 2020 special session until a date and time which are determined jointly by the President of the Senate and by the Speaker of the House of Representatives for the purpose of calling the Senate and the House back into session. Two, that if no such time is established before December 31st, 2020, the Senate 65th Wyoming State Legislature special session is adjourned, signed, die, effective at 12 o'clock noon on that date and the legislative, and the legislative general session 66, 66th Wyoming State Legislature shall now convene on the 12th day of January 2021 at the hour of 12 o'clock noon. Three, the Senate specifically concurs in any identical motion adopted by the House of Representatives. Four, that if the House of Representatives fails to concur in the action of the Senate under paragraph one through three of this motion by adopting an identical motion applicable to the House of Representatives, Senate 65th Wyoming State Legislature May 2020 special session is adjourned, signed, die. Mr. President.
Thank you. Heard the motion? All those in favor, raise your hands.
It's unanimous, sir.
It's unanimous. Are there any opposed? Same, also raise your hand, same side. While you're voting, the motion is passed to Senate. We are now at that order of business reading approval of the Journal. Senator James?
Mr. President, your Journal Committee reports that the Journal of May 16th, 2020 has been read and recommends that be approved.
There being no, there be no objection? Are there's any objection? There be no objection, the report is adopted. Subject to the conditions set forth in Majority Floor Leader, Doc Stater's motion, the Senate 65th Wyoming State Legislature May 2020 special session is adjourned. I would invite, is Senator Bytneman on the phone tonight? Senator Schuler, are you get, no, don't go away yet.
Senator Bytneman is here.
Senator Bytneman, if you're there, we, would you give us a benediction before we end up tonight?
Sure, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, thank you for answering our prayers for our special session. The glory belongs to you, Lord, not us. Thank you for the wisdom, understanding, patience, humility, and civility you gave us to carry out your will. We also thank you, Lord, for keeping us and our loved ones safe while we carried out the business of the state. It is truly an honor to serve our state and our nation, and we are grateful for all of the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We come to you, Lord, in prayer to ask that you will continue to guide us and protect us as we go back to our daily lives and ask that you will be with the leaders of this great state and this great nation. We ask that you will be with those, with those who are on the front lines fighting this horrible virus and protect those who are the most vulnerable among us. Most of all, Father, we thank you for our freedom and those who paid the ultimate price to secure our freedom. Let us always be mindful of our duties as guardians of that freedom and help us protect it and pass it along to our children and grandchildren. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Members of Senate, again, thank you so much. Thank you, staff. Thank you so much. Senate is adjourned.